Good morning. The Hafaday and the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation and Housing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021, and the time now is 9:03. Notes for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators, all main media broadcasting outlets. First public notice was issued on Tuesday, January 19. The second notice was issued on Thursday, January 21st. And then an additional notice was issued on Monday, January 25th. And this next notice was issued on February, correction, on January 29th. That was a Friday. Today is Wednesday, February 3rd. And then again, I'll repeat that the time now is 9:03. The committee will hear and accept testimonies on Bill 4-36, introduced by Senator James Moylan, co-sponsored by Senator Ada, Tony Ada, Senator Chris Duenas, and Senator Frank Blas. An act to add a new section, 24103(c), to Chapter 24, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to temporarily suspending the additional real property tax levy on improvement with a value of $1 million or more. I'd like to acknowledge the participation of senators, my colleagues. We have Speaker Theresa Lai, President. We have Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. We have Senator Jim Moylan, the author of the bill. We have Senator Lesley Secretaries, Senator Amanda Sheldon, and Senator Mary Torres. Reminder on the general rules of this public hearing, the conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Those testifying, if there's anyone, on this bill will be recognized by myself and invited to the panel. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my Lesley's staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Testimony shall be confined to the substance. Individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the committee. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceeding. Individuals who failed to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. You state your name and your title for the record. We will now begin discussion on Bill 4-36. And I ask the author of the bill to please introduce his bill and give his opening statement. Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill number 4-36 is introduced by myself and Senator Tony Ada, Senator Christopher Duenas, and Senator Frank Blas Jr. The act is to add a new subsection, 24103(c), to Chapter 24, Title 11 of Guam Code Annotated. It's relative to the temporary suspending the additional real property tax levied on improvements with a value of $1 million or more. Mr. Chair and members of the committee here, we understand that since this bill has been enacted, an important change has come into residence and global wide as well, and that's the epidemic. Since that time, it has greatly impacted, of course, our health, but in addition to the economy of our island and many places around the world has seen the similar effect. The original public law, which we are looking at amending today, was effective back in 2019. It's Public Law 1-35. This was enacted to correct some previous language of a bill that became law that needed to be adjusted to include the words "and more," "$1 million and more." And thus, it became a public law in the 35th Guam Legislature, which basically doubled the property tax on commercial businesses, affected that year and the year following. The reason for that public law in place was because, of course, of the Trump tax cuts. But since that time, of course, we've seen that through the audit of our financial report for the general fund, we did, well, better than expected initially and before the pandemic. And then since that time, of course, we see the epidemic has taken a great effect on our businesses. So what this bill does is basically to suspend, not eliminate, but only to suspend the million and more taxes for fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22. This bill is, the purpose of this bill is to help the businesses, right? To come back and to rebound as they are able to open their doors by reducing their taxes just for that fiscal year of '21 to '22. And we're hopeful that this bill, it passed into law, would allow businesses to possibly hire additional employees, but also pay for their debt that they have inquired by not having the customers that they were hoping for and by continuously paying their bills just to maintain their brick and mortar. So that's the purpose of the bill, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking forward to further discussion and dialogue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. There being no one that signed up for the bill, I'd like to also advise my colleagues and to the people of Guam that the estimated difference in the revenue would be approximately based on the Bureau Budget and Management Research. It states here approximately a difference of about $5 million. Initially, when this was introduced, it was estimated to bring in about $8 to $9 million. And the Office of Finance and Budget estimates from their statements that the difference is only about $1.5 million. Just want to refer that for my colleagues so they can read that on their packet. And I'd ask if any of my colleagues would like to speak. Speaker Theresa Lai, would you like to speak on this bill, ma'am?
No, sir. I'm here to hear testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Speaker, do you have anything you want to speak on?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not at this time for this bill.
Lesley Secretary, Senator Amanda Sheldon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for hearing this bill today. I think I'll register for the record. My concern with the bill, of course, I'd like to see any way we can help businesses during this very difficult time for everyone during the pandemic. However, I am concerned that this kind of assistance or this kind of assistance to to help relieve the real property tax will come at the expense of the Department of Education and will come at the expense of bond payments. So I'd like to ask for the committee to ensure that we are consulting, that the bond council is consulted if anything will be affected. As the fiscal note states, that this will be, you said, Mr. Chair, $5.98 million variance to the TEF if this bill were to pass. And so TEF pays for debt service to JFK High School, to Ucuduh High School, Guam Department of Education Operations, GDOE Mediation Services, GDOE School Ground Maintenance, GDOE Teds and Lees, debt service for University of Guam Capital Improvement Fund, Guam Community College Capital Improvement Fund, Guam Commission for Educator Certification Operations, Department of Public Works Bus Operations, Guam Public Library System Operations, Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, PBS Guam, and the Mayor's Council of Guam Public Safety Programs. So I think this is a very wide-ranging list of programs that may be affected. And I think we should understand the effects of what a $5.98 million decrease to TEF could mean for our students, could mean for our mayors, could mean for public education. Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Sheldon. Senator Torres, do you have any statements you want to make on this bill?
If the author was so yield, I was wondering, in the drafting of the bill, what was the rationale for exempting R1, one-family dwelling zones? If the idea is to give relief to taxpayers, is it deemed by the author that relief is not necessary for taxpayers that are residing in R1, one-family dwelling zones? I'm just trying to understand the logic in exempting them from this from this temporary suspension of property taxes. So if the author could explain, I'm just not understanding that part of it.
Senator Moylan, would you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the question from my colleague. Yes, this exempts basically personal property, right? Million dollars or more, if my personal house is valued at that, I would still have to pay the taxes per the public law. The commercial industry is where this is targeted to. Basically, it's to get Guam moving again. And by allowing the businesses to open their doors and hire back their employees, hopefully with the savings that they have for one year only. It's to generate income in the form of BBT and also for the employee wage tax to put back into the coffers of the government of Guam and hopefully exceed what we were supposedly gaining from the additional property tax on the commercial businesses valued at $1 million or more versus the residential property tax. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for my colleague for the question.
Senator Moylan, Senator Torres, do you have any other questions?
Do we have an idea how many properties this affects or what the value of this would be?
Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, colleague, for the question. The initial, I think the initial one back in 2019, I recall from the spreadsheet, this would just be an estimate there. Forty, forty to fifty, possibly. I think our initial amount, a dollar amount, was close to eight million, but of course, with the current fiscal note from BBMR that was adjusted. So it's the million or more property values. And I think some of the companies have multiple properties affected by that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, colleague.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Torres, do you have any further questions?
Thank you, Senator Moylan.
Thank you. Vice Speaker, did you have a question you would like to pose under the author of the bill?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just wanted to see if it was noted for the record, the response from Bureau of Budget and Management Research, BBMR, and that the impacts on the resources and the reduction to the government of Guam, and if that could be noted for the record. If it wasn't already notified by you, I'm sorry, I had to step out for a minute. BBMR's comments regarding the bill, I just wanted to make sure that that was noted for the record.
Thank, I think I read that, Madam Vice. The impact on the last paragraph of BBMR's response was, per the December 2020 Special Fund, referring to the last paragraph, to impact the $5.9 million that the Lesley Secretary had mentioned earlier.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that was noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice. My colleagues, just be mindful that if this bill gets to the floor, we will more than likely call for a committee, the whole, so that the folks in the financial market, such as BBMR and OIB, would be sitting there and explaining all the impacts and the details so that it will be a healthy discussion. Does any other, my colleagues would like to ask any other questions? Other than that, Senator Moylan, you have testimony you wanted to read out, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have one testimony, and I understand that others will be submitted as well. The testimony is from MVP Enterprise. It's dated February 2nd of 2021. I can read it as follows. Hafaday Honorable Senators, I'm Nathan Denight, and I'm here to represent my family business, MVP Enterprise. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of Bill 4-36, an act temporarily suspending the additional real property tax levied on improvements of $1 million or more. As stated in the bill, Guam's economy, along with the global economy, has been severely impacted by the pandemic. Tourism, our number-one industry, has come to a halt with Guam receiving only 7,000 visitor arrivals from October through December. That's a pace of less than 30,000 arrivals for the fiscal year. Local businesses have been forced to reduce hours, lay off employees, or close altogether. My grandfather, Mark Pangolinan, came to Guam after the war and through hard work and the goodness of the people of Guam, especially my grandmother, Guadalupe Antilon Torres Pangolinan, he built several businesses and acquired, as he likes to say, choice commercial properties. He always invested everything back into the business because he believes in Guam. He dedicated his life to his family and business. And at MVP, the employees are part of the family. In the past 75 years, MVP has been through ups and downs. But 2020 has been one of the most difficult years ever. In fact, the 93-year-old Mr. P. has been stuck in a hotel in Manila for the past year. He misses the family a lot. But on the positive side, he has been finally able to gain some weight. People probably automatically assume that if you own a building worth more than $1 million, you are rich and you can afford the increase in property tax, which is doubled, which was doubled. For a family business like ours that has expenses like bank loans, insurance payment, utility bills, maintenance costs, payroll, and taxes, and the increase was very difficult to manage even before COVID. You see, many of our leases are fixed, and the tax increase cannot be passed on, even on leases where we pass on the increase, which are most likely small businesses. We would hate to increase the rents in this current business environment. We also have properties that are not leased and generating no income. Unfortunately, now we have to deal with properties that are leased. But the tenants are asking for relief because they shut down due to the pandemic and cannot pay. I also want to mention that commercial real estate business like ours didn't qualify for PPP, even though we employed administration, engineering, and maintenance staff. We kept most of our team, but did not have to reduce ours. But did have to reduce ours. We think Bill 4-36 is very reasonable, considering the current situation with businesses just struggling to survive. So on behalf of our President, Mark Pangolinan, and our Vice President, John Pangolinan, we respectfully ask this legislature to pass this bill and provide temporary relief for the local business such as ours. Best regards, John Nathan Denight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. There being, there is no one else to testify. The committee will continue to receive testimonies for the next 10 days. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, and Housing, and submit it via email to senatorjoessenoxine@gmail.com or to my office located at the Rand Care Building, second floor, suite 3, 761 South Marine Corps Drive, Tmuning, Guam. Sidois Masu for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. Bill 4-36 has been heard, and this hearing is now adjourned at 9:25. Thank you, and we will now proceed and be prepared to move to Bill 13-36. The Committee on General Government Operation and Appropriation is called back to order for the purpose of hearing Bill 13-36. The time now is 9:25. Notes for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. First public notice was issued on Tuesday, January 19, and then issued on Thursday, January 21st, then issued again on January 25th and Friday, January 29th. For the record, today is Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021, and the time now is 9:25. The committee will hear and accept testimonies on Bill 13-36, introduced by Senator Mary Camacho Torres, co-sponsored by Senator, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Lesley Secretary, Senator Amanda Sheldon, an act to add a new Article 3a to Part 1 of Chapter 12, Division 1, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to adopting the Nurses Licenseure Compact, and to add a new section, 12307d of Article 3, Part 1, Chapter 12, Division 1, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing additional duties of the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners to facilitate the licensure of nurses under the compact and to further appropriate the sum of $6,000 from the Healthy Professional Licensing Office for Revolving Fund to the Department of Public Health and Social Service to fund the annual membership fee to the Nurses Licenseure Compact in fiscal year 2022. I'd like to acknowledge that the senators that are here to participate, we have also the author of the bill and her co-sponsors, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes and Lesley Secretary Amanda Sheldon. We also have Speaker Theresa Lai and Senator Jose Pedro Lai, in addition to Senator Moylan. We do have three individuals that have signed up to testify. We have Mr. Dave Lebowski, Lynette Firez, okay? And we got Ms. Carla Haddup. We will now, I would ask, I would remind everyone of the conduct of this hearing. Those testifying on behalf of Bill 13-36 organs will be recognized by myself, and we will begin with the order that I've read the names they have signed up. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my Lesley's staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Testimony shall be confined to the substance. Individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the committee. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who failed to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and may be asked to leave or be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. You state your name and your title for the record. We will now begin discussion, but first, I would ask the author of the bill to give her opening statement. Senator Torres, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for reading the title of the bill. I introduce a measure alongside Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes' last term to address what had already been a persistent problem on our island. Long before the COVID-19 outbreak, Guam was battling a nursing shortage. Our public and private hospitals had been forced to declare divert status, even though they had the bed capacity to take people in. The lack of registered nurses prevented full utilization of our specialty units, and an overflow of patients defined our emergency rooms. The message was clear. Nurses are understaffed and overworked. We need it to recruit. At the urging of the nursing community, the Vice Speaker and I authored Bill 239-35, which proposed to add Guam to the Nurse Licenseure Compact. The Guam Board of Nurse Examiners had urged simplifying the licensing process would make it easier for nurses in other states to practice here, decreasing wait time while increasing accountability through the compact's high regulatory standards. The day before we dropped Bill 239, GMH Administrator Lilian Posada stated that, quote, "If Guam were to participate in the licensure compact, the licensing process won't be as cumbersome. This will go a long way in helping us," unquote. There were clear benefits to the policy, but the truth is, we introduced it simply because our nurses asked us to. That was in 2019, and that bill never made it out of committee. Since then, Guam, like the rest of the world, has been embroiled in a pandemic for almost a year, increasing the demand on our already strained healthcare system. Our island has responded with every stopgap measure we could think of, issuing emergency licensing, requesting extensions for active-duty medical personnel, and contracting with hiring agencies at a huge expense to our public hospital. We ask, how could the NLC have benefited Guam? Unlike our current single license model, the NLC allows registered nurses and licensed practical nurses to have one multi-state license in their primary state of residence and practice in other compact states under that one license. This allows nurses to come to Guam and practice immediately without the need to apply and wait for a Guam nursing license or a disaster declaration. Under the compact's uniform licensure requirements, nurses must meet a minimum set of standards, including submission to a federal fingerprint-based criminal background check. This not only facilitates accountability, but also streamlines the verification process for our Board of Nurse Examiners. This is a practical benefit that we saw great need for this past year, Mr. Chair. While our Guam Board moved quickly and courageously, many traveling nurses found themselves held up by a cumbersome credentialing process last September. Had we been members to the compact, nurses might have gone from airplane to hospital much faster, conserving precious time and resources. Having discussed these benefits, I'd like to take a moment, Mr. Chair, to address some myths about the NLC that were circulated last term out of fear or perhaps a failure to read the bill. The first myth, that there's no immediate relief, was believed that this bill would not offer any immediate relief. And opponents had argued that we should delay what our nurses ask for because no one can come to Guam unless our board develops rules and regulations, which could take up to a year. Mr. Chair, that is patently false. As the bill makes clear, rules and regulations were already developed under the compact. Once we enact this bill, we adopt those compact rules. While Bill 13 does require our bill to implement a multi-state licensure fee and coordinate background checks, which can take time, those provisions pertain to Guam residents. In other words, nurses from other compact states can immediately practice here once we enact the NLC. This is a benefit that recent members, like New Jersey, have used to quickly bring nurses into their state. Even though New Jersey is not able to issue multi-state licenses to their residents yet, out-of-state nurses with multi-state licenses are able to practice there. This is a vital tool to help New Jersey addressing nursing shortages caused by the pandemic. So let me be clear. If we were to become members tomorrow, our board will be granted the time it needs to implement a process to issue a multi-state license to our residents. But nurses in other NLC compact states can practice in Guam immediately. The second myth, another argument I've heard, is that we can't pursue the NLC without first increasing local salaries here. I agree that we should do all we can to incentivize retention. That's why I authored Bill 35-125, which funds a previously mandated study out of my own office budget. While we certainly don't need a study to tell us our nurses deserve better, we do need an expert to consult on nurse classification and compensation rates specific to Guam, and my law allows for it. What I don't agree with is this idea that retention and recruitment are somehow mutually exclusive. While Guam can and should do both to stabilize our local nurse force, the unfortunate reality is that we don't have enough nurses to adequately care for our island right now. Joining the compact immediately Joining the compact immediately opens us up to a pool of over two million nurses, including specialty nurses, who possess the years of experience needed to fill Guam's gap in care. Recent nurse graduates do not have that needed experience. Becoming a member of the NLC may also attract nurses in compact states who wish to practice on U.S. soil closer to other areas in the Pacific region, such as the Philippines or Finally, I'd like to dispel the argument that this bill will lead to an exodus of our nurses. To date, there is no evidence from any of the thirty-four compact states that adoption has led to a surge in outmigration. If this were the case, then states would have repealed their membership in the NLC, and so far, none have. Additionally, there is nothing preventing our nurses from leaving Guam to practice elsewhere right now. In fact, many of the popular states that our nurses leave to are non-compact states. In other words, if a nurse wants to leave, he or she is able to do so right now, and the compact does not change that. I ask my colleagues to think about the paternalizing message that fear sends to our healthcare community, that we should withhold a policy they asked for so others can hold them hostage. With or without this policy, our nurses should decide what's best for their personal lives, and I, for one, won't pretend to know better than the frontliners who requested this bill. Mr. Chair, since last year, eight more states have proposed legislation to be added onto the compact, and more are planning to file this year. It just makes sense. The COVID nineteen crisis has only underscored our need to mobilize quickly and efficiently. As NLC Director Mr. James Puente put it, and I quote, "If the NLC was expanded to all fifty states, none of the guesswork with emergency orders would be necessary, because nurses could travel to other states where they are needed. No applications, fees, or background checks would be necessary. Disaster preparedness is a nonpartisan issue. The NLC is a solution to modernizing licensure and responding to disaster," unquote. I want to thank the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners, who first came to me in two thousand and nineteen about this policy, and all those on our front lines who couldn't physically be here but have submitted testimony today. Virtual appearance may have been more convenient for them, but unfortunately, they had requested that I instead ask that their testimonies be read into the record on their behalf. I'm also grateful, Mr. Chair, for your prioritizing the community and holding this hearing so quickly. A question which was raised last term that has since stuck with me throughout this process: If we can't predict what the impacts of NLC are for Guam, should we proceed? My and other supporters' response is that we can only rely on the data we have before us, and the data points to a growing number of states seeking to join the NLC following the impact of COVID nineteen. Now more than ever, the arguments for improving access to care and patient safety compel states to adopt this policy. Simply put, we shouldn't let fear be the reason we don't proceed. Let us finally proceed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Torres. I'd like to also recognize a colleague that has joined us, Senator Telah Tidaway. Um, I'd ask the MIS, is there, is there slides that they were going to present, or are we going to see that later, Senator Torres, after the live testimony first?
No, sir.
Okay. So we'll begin then with Mr. Dave Lubowski. You'd be first, followed by Ms. Lynette, you'd be next, and then Carla would follow. Okay, and then we'll have the slides and any written testimony that Senator Torres has received, because I know we do have a handful, and if they can be read for the record, I appreciate it. Dave?
Good morning, senators. My name is David Lubowski. Thank you for allowing me to give testimony on Bill thirteen, uh, thirty, on Bill thirteen thirty six. I am sorry, but I am not in support of this bill for many reasons. As you may know, due to a family tragedy, I have become involved in advocating for changes in medical care on Guam for patient rights that will have a positive impact and protect medical healthcare consumers. I have not only had firsthand experience of the tragedy of medical care gone amiss, but I have spoken to dozens of consumers, nurses, doctors, and others about consumer-related care and issues over the last two years, including and especially at GMH. In my opinion, if this bill becomes law, it will put the poorest people on Guam in more jeopardy for increased poor medical care than they already now receive at GMH, due to the departure of nurses for better salaries. Nurse retention due to salaries is already an issue, per GMH Administrator Ms. Lilian Posada's in her testimony during the thirty-fifth legislature on the same bill. I raise the question, do we need this bill if we just pay our Guam nurses what they deserve at GMH? Which should be around seventy-five thousand per year. Twenty-five thousand per year is the national average. Won't that attract off-island nurses and paid nurses on Guam a deserved salary that they have been deprived of for decades? This bill will make it easy for our nurses to leave or be recruited for the big salary in other compact states, with Guam's average nurse salary at the lowest of the thirty-four compact, uh, states. Our nurses should be earning at GMH around seventy-five thousand per year, and that will put them only in the middle of what nurses earn in the compact states. Do the people of Guam not deserve the same standard of nursing care reflected by salary as the rest of the country? Does anyone here really think that nurses under the compact from other states will say, "Oh, my gosh, let's go to Guam, it's so beautiful," and then get here and be poor as that is what our nurses' salaries look like? Or will our Guam nurses with this compact, especially GMH nurses, say, "You know what? Let's move to the States, not have to work two jobs, have more time together as a family with better working conditions"? Our GMH nurses have perhaps one of the lowest salaries in the nation and work under extremely difficult and at times hostile conditions, including being bullied on the job, especially H-1 nurses. Working conditions for nurses need to improve at GMH with an increase in pay to attract nurses, or they, as Ms. Posada's alluded to, will leave. Bill thirteen will increase our dependency, if nurses do leave, on H-one, on H, excuse me, on H-one nurses. There's nothing wrong with H-one nurses, they're great, except for one thing: They fear losing their jobs and being sent back home and not being able to support their families. That fear, if they're the ones who replace our nurses, raises serious questions about their ability to step up and assert themselves with doctors and others in a medical life-or-death crisis. I have witnessed this, I have lived this, I saw this firsthand at the hospital. Bill thirteen for bringing nurses easy, Bill thirteen is for bringing nurses easily to Guam to meet emergencies, or like the pandemic. While we are waiting for the next emergency, our underpaid nurses will be heading for better jobs. Personally, I think that is the bigger emergency and concern, losing nurses that we have now. Our public hospital will get the short end of the stick, and again, the poorest on Guam will continue to be put at risk with less nurses who are overworked, impacting medical care, patient care negatively, for the most vulnerable on Guam at GMH, where care already is a challenge, as I witnessed and was documented by the feds under their Medicare Service and CMS report for twelve patients. If you have not read that report, I suggest that you do. Also, from what I understand, the Guam Board of Nursing Examiners will lose control of who comes to Guam under the compact. This is a big concern with no local vetting. Why would you rely on others to protect our loved ones on Guam? Even the doctors, the doctors have a, the doctors have a compact, but they still screen incoming doctors, or doctors who want to transfer to Guam. I think Bill thirteen is backwards. The legislature should concentrate first on getting Guam nurses' pay raised to a rate closer to the national average, which is seventy-five thousand, to attract more good nurses from off-island, and to pay our nurses their worth, rather than keeping our nurses poor by national standards. Guam needs to attract good nurses, that's a given, and the best way to do this is by paying our valued nurses more and improving working conditions at GMH. To be honest with you, and with due respect, it's almost embarrassing, or even laughable, to look at the compact list of states and see that Guam will be at the bottom for nurses' salaries. This says volumes as to how we value healthcare on Guam beyond talk and special interest legislation compared to other compact states. That should tell you something. Thank you, senators.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lynette? Your last name is Firez, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for allowing this public hearing to further discuss this very important topic that allows adequate nursing care to the people of this island. My name is Lynette Firez. I am a registered nurse. I work at GRMC in the ICU for approximately the last four years. I began my nursing career twenty-three years ago as an Army Nurse Officer for a short period of time. I am currently a military spouse. My husband and I are completing an extended military assignment here to Guam, and I have loved taking, being at this beautiful island and have loved experiencing and caring for these people. Here in Guam, we are challenged with nursing shortages, much more than our stateside counterparts due to our remoteness and also due to not having a flow pool of nurses here to support. Long before this pandemic, we always had experienced shortages. Guam needs nurses. This Bill thirteen dash thirty-six would allow Guam to join the other thirty-four states plus as part of the Enhanced Nurse Licenseure Compact. It would also allow for uniform licensure requirements and updated system, and it would allow the nursing board to quickly look for problems with a nurse's license. It would allow telehealth nursing to take place. It would also allow other nurses to begin to practice nursing immediately, not just travel nurses, but also military spouses in nearby overseas areas like Okinawa, South Korea, and Japan, to include other places. These are U.S. nurses that are sometimes not allowed to work in these nearby overseas areas due to military SOFA laws. I realize that there is a concern of mass exodus of our local nurses. If someone were to move from Guam, I can tell you it is not likely due to just holding a multi-state nursing license. Being a military spouse nurse, myself, that moves every two to four years, I can tell you that the cost of a nursing license is only a very minute cost and detail of moving. If someone is going to move, they're going to move, whether or not they have had a multi-state license. I have moved on multiple occasions and have six nursing licenses. We can talk about retention, we can talk about recruitment, but when nurses ask, when nurses are asked what factors keep them at their current nursing job, we can probably agree that there are so many factors, but we will never know unless we are able to have a pool of nurses to choose from. For me, the factors that keep me at my nursing job are the challenge of continued learning and experience from higher patient acuties, management that listens and works with their staff, fair pay, adequate staffing that allows us to take, to safely take care of our patients, the last one being probably the most important thing, adequate staffing. I could make more money at Guam Naval Hospital, but I researched Guam hospitals when I arrived on island four years ago, and I wanted the experience, the patient acuity, and the ability to make the most difference, and I chose my hospital. I asked the same question: What are some factors that make you more willing to stay at your nursing, your current nursing job? I have a Facebook group called Guam Military Spouse Nurses that helps other Guam nurses that are military spouses or deal with the military, and I also asked another military spouse group that are also nurses from all over. Their responses included appreciation, a sense of accomplishment, making a difference, work-life balance with schedule flexibility, adequate staffing with safe patient ratios, competitive compensation, benefits, tuition reimbursement, opportunities for professional and personal growth and advancement, teamwork with ability to provide input as a team leader, being listened to and having support from leadership, location to home, and adequate orientation and training periods. Nowhere in that did they say they stayed or they moved because they had a multi-state license. As you can see, retention is a multifactorial issue. Having a multi-state license will not necessarily lead a nurse to leave their current job. Loss of nurses will come from not meeting the previously mentioned factors. If nurses choose to leave, they will, whether or not Guam becomes part of the compact states or not. Recruitment and retention are two separate issues and not the purpose of this bill. One thing is clear: We will not have retention of nurses if we don't have recruitment of nurses. We will not have patient safety in the hospitals if we don't have safe staffing. We have been asking for safe staffing for the longest time. When I first heard of the possibility of Guam becoming part of the compact states three years ago, I started an online competition, sorry, online petition on change.org that asked for support for Guam to become part of the Enhanced Nurse Licenseure Compact states. I'm proud to say that there are currently just under four thousand online signatures. Our current Guam nurses are overwhelmed with overtime, sicknesses, family issues, increased patient ratios, and understaffing. We have been understaffed, and we are tired. Please hear our local nurse leaders and our nurses as we, we ask for your help in getting more nurses here. This will help the island of Guam in providing safe care to our people here in Guam. With overwhelming support for this bill, let's move it forward so that we even have the chance to discuss and work on the other factors that allow the nurses to stay at their current nursing job, allow Guam to become part of the Nurse Licenseure Compact states. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haddup, ma'am, Doc, Chris, Dr. Haddup, thank you.
Hafiday, Speaker, Vice Speaker, and Senators. I am here today to testify in favor of this bill as a nurse, and as a nurse who's worked in various different places on Guam. I have been a GMH nurse for, I worked at GMH for about ten years, and while I agree that the salary is low, I don't believe that that is the issue in this bill. As Ms. Lynette said, recruitment and retention are two entirely separate things, and I feel like we've already addressed having this retention through the Bill thirty-five dash one, two, five that was introduced last session. I wanted to bring to attention the fact that the nurses were actually excluded from that Haze study a while ago. When I was a nurse at GMH- When I was a nurse at G M H, they said we were not part of the H A I E study because we already received a nurse pay plan study. However, when I received my G G one, when the rest of the government got two, three, four, five dollar raises, I got a mere 17 cents raise. I started my salary at $17.25 at G M H. Why did I not choose to leave island? Because salary alone is not the reason why I stay. It's service to my people, service to my island, having all my family here, those are reasons why I choose to stay. And when I talked to the travel nurses that have come by, some of them have even said to me, I want to stay on this island. And some of them have. Some of them fulfilled their traveling nurse contract and have stayed. And I asked them, why did you stay? Because you took a pay cut when you didn't, when your travel contract expired. And they said to me, nowhere else in this world can I work with such great colleagues, with such high patient acuity, that I'm learning something every single day on the job, and nowhere else can I see things that I have never seen before in other places I have worked. And that makes me a better nurse and a smarter nurse. So yes, salary is an issue, but it's not the only issue, and it's not the only reason. And the G B N E actually brought this issue up as far back as 2018. In 2018, we were, the nurses and stakeholders were invited to roundtable discussions, to dinner meetings where they presented this idea. This happened long before the pandemic, long before we had a shortage of nurses, long before we weren't able to use our H1 visa nurses. I, Mr. David brought up a question, if we need this bill, do we need this bill if we raise the salary? And I say, absolutely. We need it because we have some nurses who are migrants. They come as military spouses, they come as people who are on short-term contracts, and they don't know if they will be here on Guam for how many years. And they choose to work in federal jobs or in the military jobs where they don't need to get a Guam license. And so we lose these nurses to these other civilian or these other military or federal jobs because they don't know if they want to invest in a short term. So say they're only here for six months, they want to be able to contribute back to the island, but it doesn't make sense to them. And further, you have some of these military spouses who don't really understand the impact that having to do a nursing license on Guam can have, or how the process works, or how to get the police or court clearances, or things like that. And so they choose to opt for the easier route and just work with their current license in these facilities. I am also a military reservist, and the military requires me to maintain an active license. My license on Guam sometimes isn't updated immediately with the credentialing office, so I had to choose to get a secondary license from Hawaii. Does my secondary license in Hawaii mean that I'm going to move to Hawaii, that I'm going to migrate out of Guam? Absolutely not. And I want to tell you the ease that it was to get my Hawaii license. I went on, I applied, I electronically signed the application. In 24 hours, I had my Hawaii license. If I was able to do that with a compact license, and I'm coming to Guam for a short term, I can guarantee you more people would want to work in the civilian sector. In fact, I've talked to several of my colleagues who are active duty, and they would love to be able to afford the opportunity to moonlight in our local hospitals. They would love the opportunity to be able to have sessions where they could teach the nurses certain skills or teach them new equipment that's only available at naval hospital. But they can't do so unless they have an active Guam license. Further, there was a concern about G B N A losing control or screening or whatever. Just because you have a license on Guam to work does not dictate who you, your employment. Licenseure does not guarantee employment. It's up to the employers to decide who they want to hire, and they can ask their own screening questions, their own background checks, and their own things. There's nothing to say that if you get this compact license, you are guaranteed a job on Guam. And it's true. Nothing about the compact will lead nurses to stay or to leave. I have had several colleagues who, without the compact, have decided on their own that they wanted to move off of Guam, and their reasons weren't just salary. One of my colleagues moved because she wanted to gain residency to make college affordable to her, for her daughter. Another one of my colleague's family got sick and needed treatment that couldn't be done on Guam, and so moved off island. There is nothing to say that you can't go now and nurses do. So I really encourage all of you to examine this bill very carefully and allow us to have some nurses who otherwise wouldn't work on Guam be afforded the opportunity to be licensed under the compact. It is a nationally developed law. It's gone through a lot of rigorous process, and I really think Guam needs to be part of the compact. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haddam. Senator Torres, do you have other testimony that was submitted that you wanted to read out, ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is several testimony that were submitted and requested that we read into the record, so I will read some, I'll have my colleagues help me because there are more than one, and so if I can ask Vice Speaker to read some, and then Senator Shelton, and then I'll, I'll read the last piece of testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Madam Vice, if you can, Vice Speaker, if you can, go ahead and start, and then whichever colleague is going to read, just continue reading so that we can hear the testimony and it be read for record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity. And before I read the couple of letters that I have in front of me, if I could just share a couple of comments, and I want to say Dankluna Sizusmaasi for hosting this hearing this morning. And since 2019, Senator Torres and I had looked at making Guam, our island of Guam, join the Nurses Licenseure Compact. And since then, we did have had over 4,000 signatories on a petition urging this body to be a part of the N L C, and I know that it was brought up earlier. Thank you very much. We have also received favorable letters of support from the D O D community, and we have met with and spoke to and many of the spouses of service members who are stationed here, and they want to give back to the island community. They are certified nurses ready to augment a critical need here on our island of Guam. The standards of the N L C are much higher than that of our, of our current standards, and we would be able to target a pool of over 2 million nurses from 34 member states. And from the many off-island nurses I have spoken to, they all envy the beautiful island paradise that we live on here on our island of Guam, and they want to come here. Now, I want to say, Mr. Chair, let's do right by our people and address the problems. We know of not worry about what could happen and neglect the issues that are in front of us. I also want to share a note that a very close friend to my brother-in-law, who was a traveling nurse and had been given the opportunity to come here on a couple of occasions, is now back in the United States, making, making much, much more than what she was making here on the island of Guam, but was asked that if she had the opportunity to come back to Guam to continue to do her work, she said by a micro minute that she would come back and do it here and stay here. She said of the of our island people is something that we here on Guam take for granted because the respect here is so high, and it literally made me feel, Bannadosa really proud, when those comments were shared. And till this day, she continues to write and share things with the family and even to my brother-in-law, not knowing that they continue to have a pen-pal relationship, I guess is what I would call it. But the love she said she had just taking care of my mom and family members that are very close to her still, she said she would come to Guam if afforded the opportunity. So it works both ways, Mr. Chair, and, and, you know, we have something good that can happen here, and if there are any major issues, there, things can always be worked out. I also believe that if you build it, they will come. And based on that, Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of letters I'd like to read. This first one is from the Office of the Assistant Secretary of Defense. It's addressed to you, Mr. Chair, and it talks about, the subject is Bill 13-36C O R, Nurse Licenseure Compact. Chairman, Chairperson Augustine and members of the committee, on behalf of military families and the Department of Defense, D O D, I'm writing to express support for the policy addressed within Bill 13-36C O R. This bill seeks to enact the Nurse Licenseure Compact licenses to qualified nurses on Guam, allowing them to practice in other N L C states, and would allow nurses possessing multi-state licenses issued by other N L C states to practice on Guam without having to obtain additional licenses. Licenseure issues for both our transitioning military members and their spouses have been a priority for the department for several years. 68% of married service members reported that their spouse, spouse's ability to maintain a career impacts their decision to remain in the military, and 88% of military spouses report they want or need to work. As our military members and their families move from state to state, the ability for them to quickly gain employment and progress on their chosen career paths is very, very important, is very important. Our office is working to assist states in improving eight occupational licensure compacts to include the N L C. These occupational licensure compacts provide consistent rules that allow licensed members to work in other states through privilege to practice policies or to more easily transfer their license to a new state. Additionally, the current coronavirus pandemic demonstrates that interstate licensure compacts can provide a permanent solution to leverage underutilized medical talent to meet labor shortages in high-need areas such as nursing. 34 states have already enacted this legislation. The N L C allows a nurse to have a, to have one multi-state license in, in the primary jurisdiction of residence and to practice in other compact states while subject to each jurisdiction's practice laws. Specific benefits of the N L C include enabling nurses to practice in person or provide telehealth nursing services to patients located across the country without having to obtain additional licenses, allowing nurses to quickly cross state borders and provide vital services in the event of a disaster, facilitating tele-nursing and online nursing education. Cost-effectiveness, nurses do not have to obtain an additional nursing license, making practice across state borders affordable and convenient. The compact removes a burdened expense not only for nurses but also organizations that employ nurses and may share the expenditure of multi, multiple licenses. In closing, let me say that D O D is extremely grateful for Guam's ongoing commitment and efforts to support our military members and their families, especially concerning career portability. We appreciate the opportunity to support the policy reflected in Bill 13-36C O R. Please feel free to contact me with any questions you might have. Sincerely, Kelly May Douglas, Southwest Regional Liaison, Defense State Liaison Office, O D A S D Military Community and Family Policy. It was ceded to several senators. The next one, Mr. Chair, is addressed to you on February 2nd. I, I will note for the record, Mr. Chair, that the, that letter from Ms. Douglas, Ms. Kelly May Douglas, was dated January 27th, 2021. This one, this new letter is dated February 2nd, addressed to you. Dear Chairman, Senator Augustine, and Committee members, on behalf of the National Council of State Boards Nursing, I am writing to voice my support for Bill 13-36C O R, which authorizes Guam to join 34 states enacting the Nurse Licenseure Compact. The N L C allows registered nurses and licensed practical nurses to have one multi-state license in their primary state of residence and practice in other compact states under that one license. The N L C is a vital tool in the fight against COVID-19. The N L C allows nurses to immediately cross borders and provide vital services to fill gaps in care. This is vital too to help alleviate the nursing shortage in Guam as well as times of a disaster like COVID-19, when healthcare staffing is strained due to the increased patient volume and loss of healthcare workers from the spread of illness. During the COVID-19 pandemic, nurses in N L C participating states were able to immediately cross state licenses and treat patients. This mobile nurse workforce is a, is vital to cover gaps in care, both during the pandemic and beyond. There has been some concerns voiced in Guam about the potential outmigration of nurses if N L C is adopted. The N L C has been operating for over 20 years, and no state has ever repealed the N L C. In fact, the N L C has only continued to grow in state participants. If compact states were experiencing a large exodus of nurses, then they would have left the N L C long ago. Guam can bring needed relief to its hospitals, nurses, and patients by enacting the N L C. Once Guam passes, the N L C, nurses from compact states can start practicing in Guam without delay, even though Guam may not be able to issue compact licenses to Guam nurses yet. The N L C increases access to healthcare, protects patient safety, and is a crucial tool to address nursing shortages. Thank you for taking the time to address this important piece of legislation. Best, Jim Wentey, Director, Nurse Licenseure Compact. Mr. Chair, thank you for giving me the opportunity to read that on the record, and I also want to say from personal experience, when my mom had a stroke two years ago in 2018, I had a couple of nurses that took the time to, to work closely with her when she was in ICU and then in the room, the, the private room she had after getting out of ICU, and there was a couple of nurses that came up to me when they realized that I was a senator and asked how I could help, and this was And this was back in October 31st, November 1st, and that time period of 2018. And that request was, how can we help bring more nurses to Guam? How can we help lift and how can we help? And I said to that nurse that we didn't have two nursing programs on Guam, I mean, one nursing program on Guam, we had two. We have a program that works closely with the Guam Community College and also with the University of Guam. And it was at that time that I, I didn't even realize that there was a waiting list of nursing students that wanted to get in and couldn't get in. And I asked what the reason was to them and they, to her, to them. And they said that the reason why there was a holdup was because there's not enough, I guess, professors to, to do the class depending on, I guess there's a racial that was needed for teacher to the number of nursing students. And the recommendation of the NLC had come to mind. Mr. Chair, that was in 2018, we're now in 2021. My mother is still going through the need of nursing assistance. We are working closely with a couple of CNAs who are immediate relatives. And I have an adopted niece who started GMH because there's a great shortage. And all I could say to her last night, because I have mama duties on Tuesdays and Sundays and then we alternate for those that can't make it for some reason or another. And I had to tell my adopted niece that I'm very proud of her and I'm very proud. And she said, you know, Aunt Tina, it took me a very long time to get into the program. More importantly, now that I just started the program again because of that opportunity, I now have this job, but I have to work from midnight. She goes in at 11:00 and works from midnight till eight in the morning. She said, we're really short of nurses. Are you going to that hearing and can you help? Because they asked me to ask you. And I told her that I was really proud of her and that I would continue this fight. And she said, I know Grandma Munia, it's been two years, you know, since 2018, and we're going on year number three. And I hope soon that that opportunity can come to help bring more nurses because I'm just starting out and I know that they need help. But because she couldn't go through the program back then, it didn't stop her from continuing to try and learn and go through whatever private training that she was working with or I don't know which group it is that she's with. But the mere fact that someone who is literally trying to go through the nursing program knows that it was difficult to get in and knows that if there's anything we could do to help, please try. So I'm committed to that, Mr. Chair. With all due respect, again, looking at programs that can build upon for us is very, very key. And I'm hope, and I hope, I hope I'm not disturbing anybody. I hope that, that this opportunity to speak is good.
I, I, excuse me for pausing. Can you check if YouTube stopped, if the system stopped, we're not live? And we'll take a few minutes, pause, and then you can continue, Madam Vice.
Oh, okay.
Thank you to the people of Guam, thank you for your patience. We're back live on Facebook and we're still tracking on TV. But for the audience that are watching on Facebook, Madam Vice, do you have anything further, please?
Uh, thank you.
Continue.
And thank you very much for trying to fix the technical glitch earlier. So I'll just go ahead. I, I just received another, um, letter that I'd like to read into the record, Mr. Chair, if I may. And it says, Honorable Senators, I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of Bill 13-36. My name is Dr. Kevin Hytosis. I am, or Hytosis, I am a nurse practitioner with the Department of Veteran Affairs and the Vice Chair for the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners. I've had the privilege of serving the public on the Guam Nursing Board for the past ten years. Ensuring patient safety and the public's protection through nursing practice regulation is the board's mission. It is this mission and duty that I take on with the utmost importance. It is why I am in favor of the Nurse Licenseure Compact. The NLC is not just about raising greater mobility and access to nursing care for our island. It is also about ensuring the safety of the public through licensing and discipline enforcement. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an overwhelming effect on our healthcare delivery system, but it has taught us that accessible nursing care has to be fluid and dynamic across state boundaries. It was not the case on our island. Guam has needed to mobilize nursing personnel to staff areas of hospital shortage in the ICU and emergency departments and medical surgical floors. As a result of the emergency declaration, the governor called the nurses to assist in the pandemic crisis. Although the nurses stepped up to the challenge, they worked in unfamiliar settings. In some cases, there was a mismatch between skill and area of need. As a result, school nurses were mandated to work in the hospital. Military nurses were called to assist at our public hospital, requiring time and cost for licenses to be processed through the board. Further, highly-paid travel nurses were also hired to fill the inpatient needs. If Guam adopted the NLC, nurses from a compact state would meet the uniform licensure requirement and these experienced nurses, nurses would have served the needs of specialty care in the hospital. The adoption of the NLC allows for help with the nursing shortage in Guam with experienced nurses from other states. The Nurse Licenseure Compact is in agreement with other states, permitting a nurse to have one license but have the ability to practice in other states, which are part of the compact. This eliminates the burdensome, costly and time-consuming process of obtaining single-state licenses in each state of practice. Thirty-four member states are currently part of the NLC and that represents a pool of two million registered nurses who may be a resource for Guam under the NLC. Nurses are allowed to cross state borders in times of emergency need rapidly. Telehealth nursing would be permitted across the country without additional need for licenses. Not everyone qualifies for a multi-state license. An applicant must hold, must hold an active unencumbered license and submit to state and federal fingerprint-based criminal background checks. Furthermore, the nurse must not have been convicted or found guilty, has no misdemeanor convictions related to nursing practice and is not currently a participant in an alternative program. Our Guam students would not be limited in online nursing education. The Institute of Medicine Future of Nursing Report recommended that nurses achieve higher levels of education and training through an improved educational system that promotes seamless academic progression. Distance education courses provide nurses tremendous opportunities by offering access to quality nursing education in small communities or rural areas where nursing programs do not exist. They also allow flexibility for those students who otherwise could not attend a nursing program. Through the NLC, online nursing education affords our population and students the opportunity for higher degrees and advance, and advancement in different specialties. Adopting the NLC presents an opportunity to modernize the Guam Board of Nursing with the state-of-the-art systems in license management and discipline enforcement, called the Optimal Regulatory Board System, ORBS, ORBS. It is a confidential and secure cloud-based system that will allow the Guam Nursing Board to run with the leading-edge system. It provides modules for licensing, discipline, and education program management functions while efficiently, efficiently reducing member board operational processes. The ORBS digitizes paper processes, is no cost to members board to use, and requires no system maintenance cost. Purchasing the software would typically cost well over a hundred thousand Purchasing the software would typically cost well over a hundred thousand dollars. It would be available to Guam through a grant from the N I C- from the NLC. Just imagine that our nurses can apply and renew their licenses online. The Nurse Licenseure Compact and ORBS make sense for the needs of our island. A nurse with a multi-state license can easily and quickly respond to the needs in times of crisis. The compact reduces complexity, reduces costs, and provides an e- even higher level of public protection. I hope you will vote in favor of this bill. Thank you. Mr. Chair, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present these, uh, and read these testimonies, uh, into the record. More importantly, based on personal experience and having had the opportunity to speak to uh, nurses here, uh, working in our system, uh, we understand that the university and the Guam Community College also have great programs. And if there's a need for us to even look at strengthening or open the upper, and opening opportunities for the University of Guam and the Guam Community College, Mr. Chair, I have no problems looking into that because we want to make sure that the nursing component for Guam, it is, uh, is at a standard where Guam will benefit, would only be a benefit for our island of Guam. So in that effort, Mr. Chair, it is important that I continue to support the efforts of this bill moving forward. It's been several years, and I will continue to be an advocate and support this efforts for our nursing community on Guam. Sign of mercy.
Thank you, Madam Vice. Ladies and Secretary Senator Amanda Shelton, you have testimony you're going to read to the, for the record?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to thank the nurses who were here today to testify and for their continued advocacy for their profession and for improved healthcare on our island. I'd also like to thank Senator Torres for sponsoring this bill and allowing me to be a co-sponsor for her, uh, work and continued, uh, continued commitment to seeing this bill through. I'd like to read for the record testimony, uh, from Xenia Cruz-Pesina, MSN RN Health Professional Licensing Office Administrator, Guam Board of Nurse Examiners Executive Director. This is addressed to the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, February third, two thousand twenty-one. Hafide Senators of the thirty-six Guam Legislature, my name is Xenia Cruz-Pesina, MSN RN Administrator for the Health Professional Licenseure Office, EMS Administrator and Executive Director for the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners. Thank you for this opportunity to present my written testimony in favor of implementing the Nurse Licenseure Compact on Guam. This public hearing is exciting for me and many of our nurses on Guam. There are thirty-four out of fifty states that are members of the Nurse Licenseure Compact, and due to the COVID nineteen outbreak, several other states plan to propose legislation in the coming months. To date, Washington State and Oregon are states pending legislation. When passed, both will be the first in the West Coast to do so. Senators, here we are with our NLC bill up for legislation. With your support, Guam will be the first territory that would open the doors for specialty nurses and make available telehealth and online nursing education possible in this remote part of the world. As you hear testimonies about the NLC, I implore you, senators, to weigh in the benefits that the NLC offers and what that will mean for our island, our island with limited resources because of our geographical location. The pandemic has proven the dire need for specialty nurses, telehealth, and online nursing education, a huge benefit for our island of Guam. The public hearing is a long-awaited journey. Before you is a bill that will enable nurses to practice in person for virtually, by way of telehealth, and provide needed care to patients across the ocean without having to obtain multiple licenses. This bill would also allow nurses from thirty-four states to employ over two million nurses to assist Guam in the event of an emergency and vice versa. The NLC has been operational for fifteen years and has proven to be safe and efficient. You will hear the testimony of many of our nurses in support of the NLC, and rightfully so, because it is the right thing to do. For years, we have been struggling with the shortage of nurses. Thank the Lord for the greatness of our University of Guam School of Nursing that produces nurses consistently for our island. But that is not enough to alleviate the shortage of experienced, seasoned, and specialized nurses. That is where we fall short of providing nursing services. We lack specialty nurses to assist in specialized areas of the hospital. The intensive care unit, the emergency room, and operating room. Adoption of the NLC is one vehicle that will promote recruitment of nurses to our island. The care of our people during the pandemic was dependent on the hiring of travel nurses, a temporary measure with a huge price tag attached to it. The pandemic has proven that we can bring the necessary specialty nurses that our island lacks, but let's be smart and frugal with our monies and allow nurses with multi-state licenses to be recruited locally so there's no disparity in pay among our island nurses. As the administrator of the Health Professional Licensing Office, I wanted to shift gears and share two things. One, an update of the medical compact licensure, and two, a timeline of our journey to obtain NLC. First, the Guam Board of Medical Examiners adopted the medical compact that was passed into law in two thousand eighteen with full implementation in two thousand nineteen. To date, the island gained thirty-four physicians as a result of the compact. This is amazing, as we know how difficult it can be to recruit physicians. Secondly, I wanted to share the timeline for our quest for NLC. February two thousand eighteen, the NLC was first introduced to Guam nurses by my predecessor in the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners. A conference was held, providing a roundtable discussion with key stakeholders. Presenters from the National Council of State Boards of Nursing funded the conference and presentation provided by three members of the council. June two thousand eighteen, a second meeting was held on Guam to meet with key stakeholders. I do not have any record of the output or disposition of the NLC at that time. April two thousand nineteen, the idea of resurrecting the quest for NLC was discussed by the Guam Board of Nursing. In collaboration with our national partners, a second conference was offered. May two thousand nineteen, the NCSBN sent representatives to Guam and provided a two-day conference attended by Guam nurses, nursing leaders, hospital administrators, government officials, senators, and our newly elected governor. The conference provided information about the NLC and its impact to Guam and the nursing workforce. If afforded, our nursing community an opportunity for questions and answers, and most importantly, a chance to receive feedback from key stakeholders. At the end of the day, we had an overwhelming support for NLC from our island nurses, with the request to get going with our pursuit for NLC, and so the journey began. June, July, and August two thousand nineteen, Guam was chosen as a recipient of the NCSBN to receive the option, optimal board regulatory system. The ORBS is a turnkey solution for independent NCSBN members in the U.S. and Guam will be the first territory to avail of the system. The system will assist the HPLO with license management and discipline enforcement across the lifespan of a nurse. Guam currently utilizes NERSEYS, a comprehensive electronic information system that collects and stores a nurse's personal information, licensing information, discipline information, and license verification. The ORBS is the ultimate upgrade of the system that costs close to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The first phase of the project will be funded by NCSBN. Three contract individuals were hired to input our current paper filing system of active and inactive nurses into a database in preparation for ORBS, which was completed in two thousand twenty. The second phase of the project is the integration of NERSEYS to ORBS. September two thousand nineteen, attended an NLC conference to gain information about the NLC and its guidelines for implementation. October two thousand nineteen, educational sessions with the community and key stakeholders. October two thousand nineteen, Senator Mary Torres agreed to sponsor the NLC bill with Speaker Tina Munya Barnes as co-sponsor. November two thousand nineteen, continued educational sessions with key stakeholders. November two thousand nineteen, draft bill for Guam NLC. December two thousand nineteen, bill number two-three-nine dash thirty-five sent to Committee on Health, pending date for public hearing. January twenty twenty twenty, public hearing scheduled for bill number two-three-nine dash thirty-five. January twenty twenty, public hearing canceled due to holiday. September two thousand twenty, eleven months later, and a public hearing was rescheduled for September thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Hearing on bill number two-three-nine dash thirty-five, followed by a roundtable discussion, second hearing on bill number two-three-nine dash thirty-five. Despite the overwhelming support of the bill by nursing experts, the bill was not introduced into session for voting. January two thousand twenty-one, the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners regrouped and sent out a Survey Monkey to all licensed nurses on Guam. Over a thousand emails were sent, the questions and results of the survey as of February third, two thousand twenty-one. Are you a resident of Guam? Out of five hundred ten respondents, eighty-two percent answered yes, seventeen percent answered no. Do you support joining the Nurse Licenseure Compact? Out of five hundred nine respondents, ninety-seven point eight-four percent answered yes, and two point one-six percent answered no. January two thousand twenty-one, bill number thirteen dash thirty-six introduced by Senator Torres, Senator Munya, and Senator Shelton is scheduled for a public hearing on February third. February third, bill number thirteen dash thirty-six will be heard by the public. Next steps, upon enactment of the NLC on Guam, nurses with a multi-state license will immediately be able to travel and work on Guam. The implementation of the ORBS system will take up to a year. Guam will not be able to provide multi-state license pending implementation of ORBS. This will be an opportunity for Guam to work on concerns regarding nursing salaries on Guam. GBNE to establish an upgrade fee for multi-state licensure. The Guam Board of Nurse Examiners is grateful for the introduction of bill number thirteen dash thirty-six, and we are hopeful that this time around, the voices of our experts will be heard. The current opposition claims the NLC will dilute our nursing talent pool, but in actuality, the NLC will benefit our patient and healthcare system, as we will be better able to attract talented nurses from other healthcare systems who could introduce better evidence-based practice or efficiencies in nursing care. Another opposition is loss revenues. An updated financial impact resulted in the following. Revenue loss: There are one hundred eighty-three nurses in the mainland who hold a Guam license but are not residents of Guam. If they continue to renew at eighty dollars every two years, the loss would amount to fourteen thousand six hundred forty dollars. Revenue gain: There are eighty-four nurses in the mainland who hold a Guam license and are residents of Guam, and fifty nurses who currently work in a compact state who hold a single Guam license, a total of one hundred thirty-four nurses who would have to avail of Guam's compact fees at one hundred dollars every two years, resulting in a gain of thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. Anticipated revenue, revenue loss of fourteen thousand six hundred forty dollars and revenue gain of thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. This is not significant revol- there is no significant revenue loss, assuming that the above license holders renew or apply for multi-state licensure. It is quite evident by the overwhelming support of respondents from the Survey Monkey that Guam nurses want the Nurse Licenseure Compact. The survey resulted in ninety-seven point eight-four percent in support of the NLC. It is unfortunate that our voices were not heard last year, two thousand twenty, but senators, you can change that this year, two thousand twenty-one. Let the voices of the experts who know what is best for our island of Guam be heard. When it comes to our profession, I say let the experts make the decision. With your support, we can do what is right for our island, and the right thing to do is to give the Nurse Licenseure Compact a chance to be the vehicle to attract what Guam needs, strong, experienced, seasoned nurses to help care for our people of Guam. Sincerely, Xenia Cruz-Pesina, MSN RN. And Mr. Chair, if I may, read one more testimony into the record.
Buenos Senators of the thirty-six Guam Legislature and healthcare leaders, my name is Christine Takerow. I will speak on behalf of GMHA's nursing administrators. Myself is the Deputy Assistant Administrator of Nursing Services, Ms. Gemma Beth Symbilo, our Assistant Administrator of Nursing Services, and on behalf of our hospital administrator and CEO and nurse leader, Mrs. Lillian Paris-Pasadis. We join our CEO as a registered nurse herself with more than thirty years of experience in hospital nursing practice, community health nursing practice, academia, nurse administrator, management, and now in her current capacity of hospital administrator, to present testimony in support of the proposed bill number thirteen dash thirty-six. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to participate in the public hearing on the proposed legislation for Nurse Licenseure Compact. As Guam's only government and public hospital, and as our community's largest government employer of nurses, we have three hundred plus RNs and LPNs currently employed at the Guam Memorial Hospital and the Skilled Nursing Facility, in addition to sixteen at the Department of Corrections Clinics. Over these last ten months, GMHA has merged efforts with our entire healthcare community to face on our biggest challenges, fighting COVID nineteen. As the designated COVID nineteen hospital, we have seen over seven hundred twenty-two inpatient admissions for our community's sickest patients from Janu- from March fifteenth, two thousand twenty, to January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, to include those COVID patients only seen at our emergency and urgent care areas. We transformed many areas of care to open seven COVID care units. In order to effectively manage both our COVID and non-COVID patients, travel nurses were contracted to meet our crisis staffing needs. This helped GMHA to maintain quality of patient care, decrease risk of poor outcomes, and alleviate nursing staff fatigue and burnout. The need was for experienced nurses in specialty areas such as our emergency department, ICU/CCU, telemetry, and hemodialysis units. In these situations, NLC can help significantly, especially for crisis staffing in the face of implementing crisis standards of care. We fully support NLC. However, this has to go hand-in-hand in fully supporting a pay structure that can help recruit and retain nurses. Without a competitive pay structure, we would not be able to take full advantage of this bill. We recommend to first address, update, and right-size the salaries of hospital nurses so that they are more competitive with other states or territories that are currently or may become members of the NLC. GMHA just does not have enough nurses to meet the demands of our community. Having access nurses under the NLC can ease critical staffing needs. Several months ago, we conducted a brief and quick poll from the nursing management team. The following represents feedback from thirty-three nurse managers. Nineteen, fifty-eight percent nurse manager supported NLC. Twelve, or thirty-six percent, were undecided, and two, or six percent, of the nurse managers did not support. The single most critical reason for the six percent state why they do not support the NLC legislation is premised on the government's current salary structure for nurses. And although the advantage of the NLC is the expediency and reduction of processing the nurse licensure application so that the nurse can begin working immediately, the downside is that there will also be continual loss of our local nurses. Hence, it is imperative that we address and adjust the current salary structure for our nurses. Another significant advantage of the NLC membership, should this legislation pass, is the enhanced ability to employ nurses from the military population. Active-duty nurses and dependents of military personnel, who are nurses, are looking to gain experience in Guam civilian hospitals. Many military nurses are discouraged because of the added expenditure process or lower wages, especially for specialty areas in our hospital. The current pay structures for nurses are as follows. Hospital nurses' salary: For an SN one entry level step one, hourly rate of seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents, or an annual salary of thirty-six thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty cents. An SN two, step two, after two years' experience in a U.S. hospital with a BSN, twenty-one dollars and five cents an hour. An SN2 Step 2, after 2 years' experience in a US hospital with a BSN, $21.05 an hour, or an annual salary of $43,784. SN2 Step 2, after 3 years' experience in a US hospital with an ADN, $21.05 and an annual salary of $43,784. An LPN1 entry level Step 1, $13.42, an annual salary of $27,911. An LPN2, after 2 years' experience in a US hospital Step 1, $14.55 hourly and $30,259 as an annual salary. While the position of our nursing leadership supports the NLC concept and its intended purpose, and given that we continually lose nurses, particularly among the new and young nurses of the University of Guam School of Nursing and Guam Community College, who after working and acquiring 2 years of hospital experience, they not only resign and leave GMH, many of them leave the island. We invest in preparing and training these nurses only to lose them to the US mainland to, in pursuit of higher salaries. The average hourly pay for RNs in the US ranges from $40.21 per hour to as high as $54.44 per hour in California. The most popular states that many of the nurses leave to are California at $54.44 an hour, Hawaii at $50.03 an hour, Washington DC at $45.59 an hour, Oregon at $44.69 an hour, New York at $42.23 an hour, and Las Vegas, Nevada at $42.49 an hour. California and Hawaii are the 2 states that commonly do not hire nurses unless they have 2 years of hospital experience. In terms of the LPNs, LVNs, hourly rates in the mainland range from $23.32 an hour to $32.69 an hour. The average rate is $24 an hour. In conclusion, we recommend to adjust, amend, the current salary structure for GMHA's hospital RNs and LPNs before the implementation of NLC. And again, that was testimony from Christine Takerow of the Guam Memorial Hospital. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to read those into the record and allowing me now to reiterate my support for, for this bill. And also to ask our colleagues to support this bill, to support the experts, the nurses who have come before us. I know there are some concerns that were brought up by our GMH nurses, which I think we have taken some of the first steps as we passed a, a bill for a, a pay study for nurses at the end of the 35th Guam Legislature, so we are well on our way to, to doing that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Sen, Senator Shelton. Senator Torres, do you have any further testimonies you'd like to read for the record, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just have one more testimony to read, and this is a testimony of Bernadette Santos, MPA BSN RN, who is the chairperson of the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners. And it reads, "Testimony and Support of Bill 13-36. Good morning, Chairperson St. Augustine and Senators of the 36 Guam Legislature. Thank you for the opportunity to share my written testimony. My name is Bernadette Santos, and I am the chairperson of the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners. I have been fortunate to serve on the Board of Nursing for the past 5 years. I am also the nurse manager for the Guam VA Clinic in Agania Heights. I'd like to state that my testimony today is not my reflection on the part of the Department of Veterans Affairs. As I begin my testimony in support of Bill 13-36, I'd like to thank Chairperson St. Augustine and bill sponsors Senator Torres, Senator Munya Barnes, and Senator Shelton. Thank you for moving the NLC forward, showing your commitment and support for the nursing community by scheduling the public hearing very early in this new term of the 36 Guam Legislature. I'd like to briefly acknowledge the work of that, of our former executive officer, Marlene Carbelito, and fellow board member, former GBNE Chair, Dr. Kevin Hethosis, who brought the idea of exploring NLC for Guam back in August of 2017. It was during a networking conversation with Mr. Jim Puente at the National Council of State Boards of Nursing Annual Conferences that the concept of Guam becoming a member of the NLC was initiated. I'd like to thank, I'd like to also acknowledge our current executive officer, Ms. Xenia Pessina, who literally hit the ground running her first day of work with GBNE in 2019. She oriented quickly and since then has facilitated preparatory steps in anticipation of NLC membership. I've had the opportunity to learn about the NLC over the past 3 years, and I believe that enacting this legislation will be good for Guam. The Nurse Licenseure Compact allows nurses with unencumbered licenses to have one license to practice in other compact states or jurisdictions. Over the course of this public hearing, you will hear testimony about the benefits of the Nurse Licenseure Compact with respect to expanding access to care for the people of Guam, telehealth nursing, nursing education, nursing support in disaster relief, and support of military families. Thank you for allowing me to present my support for this bill from my perspective as the Chair for the Board of Nursing. The Council of State Governments website reports that there are more than 200 interstate compacts in the US, and one of those compacts allows for us to use our driver's license to drive in any state or US territory. I would like to see Guam join in the Nurse Licenseure Compact, which will allow a nurse to physically or virtually practice in any of the 34 states that are currently a part of the NLC. It is with the understanding that anyone who possesses a driver's license has the knowledge and skills to safely operate a car in any US jurisdiction. In the same way, we can be confident in the nurse holding a multi-state license because the NLC Commission established a set of 11 uniform requirements that a nurse must meet to be eligible to obtain a multi-state nursing license. As a board member, my mind is put at ease, knowing that not only are we able to allow nurses to seamlessly practice on Guam, but that any nurse who comes to work on Guam under a multi-state license has no record of a felony or a misdemeanor related to nursing practice. As one of the NLC reform, uniform requirements, any nurse flagged with either of these in the mandatory local police and FBI background checks are deemed ineligible for a multi-state license. This serves as a protective layer for our island. What is the NLC Commission that I just referenced? The heads of the state licensing boards become the compact administrator for their states and provide representation in the Interstate Commission of Nurse Licenseure Compact Administrators. Per Bill 13-36, which is essentially the language all NLC states have adopted, Guam will have equal representation in the commission. Guam's representation would be our GBNE executive officer. The NLC Commission meets annually, historically at the same time of the National Council of State Boards of Nursing Annual Meeting. Xenia, our GBNE executive officer, Rosemary from the HPLO office, HPLO Office, and I, along with our counterparts from the CNMI, actually attended the last face-to-face NLC Commission meeting held during the 2019 NCSBN Annual Meeting in Chicago. Attendance to this annual meeting comes at no cost to the GBNE, since travel funding for board members is provided by the National Council of State Boards of Nursing. A question many ask is, what is the associated cost of implementation of the NLC? Joining the NLC not only opens our island to any of the 2 million nurses who hold multi-state licenses, but also comes with the gift of the Optimal Regulatory Board's system, known as ORBs, which will revolutionize GBNE. ORBs will modernize operations at our Board of Nursing. According to the article Rising to the Challenge, ORBs found in the InFocus Summer 2019 publication, ORBs is described as a turnkey solution for boards of nursing that will assist with license management and disciplinary enforcement across the lifespan of a nurse. Advantages cited in the article include digitizing paper processes and reducing the manual input of data. This has been especially burdensome for our GBNE staff during the pandemic. ORBs and all of its advantages will come to GBNE with NLC membership at the price tag of $0. This is a program that is worth over $600,000 in its implementation year. In addition to the free installation of this program, NCSBN would absorb the cost for licensing, hosted infrastructure, professional service of deployment, maintenance, upgrades, and ongoing support. This is a dream come true for boards of nursing. What would Guam's responsibility be financially as an NLC member? As stated in the bill, there is a nominal fee of $6,000 per annum associated with the NLC membership. GBNE would identify a full-time project manager who will run ORBs. From GBNE's perspective, based on the latest Financial Impact Statement completed in January 2021, the projected revenue loss with NLC implementation will not greatly impact GBNE operations. Being part of the NLC gives Guam marketers another bullet point in their advertisements to attract nurses to come to our beautiful island. We are always in a nursing shortage, as others have previously testified about. With NLC membership, we'd be able to attract more nurses, particularly nurses who desire to live on US soil and closer to countries in Asia. I'd had the privilege of being the supervisor of 4 military spouse nurses, who although only worked for me for 1 to 2 years, provided critical support in my facility, especially during the pandemic. All of the military spouse nurses expect, expressed how much they liked Guam. In fact, one informed me that she and her active-duty husband love Guam so much that they have put in an extension for a longer tour of duty. NLC would relieve military spouse nurses coming to Guam from having to endorse their licenses to obtain a Guam license. GBNE launched a survey this past weekend, which at the time of reporting yielded 54 nurse military responses. 98% of the respondents indicated they would be more likely to practice in a Guam civilian facility if Guam was a member of the NLC. Of the 54 respondents, 23, or 42% of the respondents currently hold a multi-state license. GBNE also sent a separate survey out to all 1,456 Guam licensed nurses this past weekend. As of 72 hours after launching the survey, 510 licenses, or 35% of the total... Excuse me, there was a interruption with an alarm, but I'll proceed, Mr. Chair. 510 licenses, or 35% of the total licenses, had responded. Residency breakdown was as follows: 83% Guam residents and 17% non-Guam residents. A total of 498, or 98% of all the respondents indicated support in joining NLC. During the public hearing for Bill 239-35 held in September of 2020, there was an overwhelming support given by testimony of nursing leaders throughout the island. Based on the recent survey and previous hearing for NLC, joining the Nurse Licenseure Compact is something Guam's nurses want to move forward with. Guam's experience with the COVID-19 pandemic underscores the advantage Guam would have if it was under the compact. If Guam became a member of the NLC today, travel nurses with multi-state licenses could immediately begin working on Guam. This would remove the administrative burden to HPLO staff needing to process emergency temporary work permits under the emergency declaration. To reiterate, these nurses will have already met all of Guam's mandatory licensure requirements, and Guam would have the assurance that background checks have been completed. This is a precious, a precious time that is saved, especially during a pandemic. Being part of the NLC could entice more nurse instructors to teach online courses for a growing pool of Guam nurses seeking graduate and doctoral studies. I personally know of at least 10 nurses who have obtained their Masters in Nursing or a doctoral degree within the past 2 years. As you may or may not know, these programs are not available on Guam. Our Guam nurses want and deserve these opportunities for higher education, and NLC helps with that. The NLC brings the ability of nurses from other jurisdictions to provide care to patients via telehealth. Some examples of nursing care include telephone triage, nursing supportive care for patients with diabetes, congestive heart failures, COPD, the list goes on. Telehealth communication interactions by phone, video conferencing, or secured messaging have widely been adopted by healthcare facilities and supported by Medicare due to the pandemic. The nurse providing care from thousands of miles away must possess a privilege to practice on Guam because nursing care is being delivered to a patient who is physically on Guam. When Guam becomes a part of the NLC, nurses still have the option for applying and renewing their Guam licenses as a single-state license. In fact, if NLC is passed on Guam, GBNE initially anticipates partial implementation in that affirmation ORB system will need to be put into place with the help of NCSBN and NLC before Guam can start issuing any multi-state licenses to Guam nurses. Guam will, however, instantaneously benefit upon enactment of NLC in that current holders of multi-state licenses would be able to start practicing in Guam immediately. Pursuing membership to NLC is a great undertaking. However, we must not let fear of change prevent us from moving forward. I believe it is achievable with the support of NCSBN and NLC. We need to shift our thinking and recognize that NLC must be viewed as one approach to addressing the nursing shortage on Guam. This is a great recruitment strategy. Many in the community believe that Guam must simultaneously initiate strategies for retention of nurses, such as addressing nursing salaries. The timing for both of these to occur is now. The timing for modernization of GBNE is now. Please do the right thing and support Bill 13-36. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. Respectfully, Bernadette Santos, MPA BSN RN. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to emphasize in closing that the... I read into the record all testimonies as, as requested because I believe that the concerns and the questions are not, are not necessarily things that we should put aside, but I think that the, the thought process that has to occur, has to take into account all concerns. And I believe that where these concerns have been raised, the answers have also been presented, including the, the incremental solutions, such as what we did with Public Law 35-125, which will initiate a comprehensive study of the nurse pay scale on Guam. So, sidos maasi to my colleagues for helping me to read the testimony, and thank you to all for providing the written testimony this morning. Sidos maasi.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Does any of my colleagues like to speak on behalf of the bill? And I will begin with, I'll ask Madam Speaker- And I will begin with, I'll ask Madam Speaker first, and then we'll proceed and cover everyone. We'll get a shot. Senator, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank those who have submitted testimony today and come in today to testify as well. I very much appreciate the fact that, you know, nurses like the compact. It gives them mobility. It allows them, you know, to avoid any perceived hassle of applying in any other state that's under the compact. They are allowed to simply show up and without having to be licensed in those other states. But the fact remains that not every state is a part of this compact, and they have chosen not to be. And I just want to caution that Guam has a very unique situation, and we have to also make a very unique decision. So some of the states that are not part of this compact at the current time include Alabama, Arizona, Arkansas, Colorado... I'm sorry, wait, I'm reading the wrong list. States that are not part of the compact include Massachusetts, Michigan, Pennsylvania, Alaska, Rhode Island, Vermont, California, Connecticut, the District of Columbia, Hawaii, Illinois, Minnesota, Nevada, New York, Ohio, Oregon, Washington State, and some of the territories. And the fact that they're not members of the compact, I take very seriously because this issue has also been debated very strenuously in those jurisdictions. And there have been people and professionals and experts on both sides of the question. But I do believe that each one of these jurisdictions made a determination based on its own unique circumstances. And I very much, you know, I hear the testimony that, especially those from, you know, in a hiring capacity at institutions, you know, across the island who are trying to hire nurses, and that hiring a compact nurse would preclude, again, that administrative, you know, hassle of applying to the Guam Board and getting licensure. But I want to note that the fee for the Guam license is $150. So they would be saving that fee, which, in my opinion, is not significant given that, you know, we are allowing the privilege for them to practice. We must, the board must regulate that practice. And we've had other boards who've had issues with the fees that they are receiving not being enough to regulate their practice. So for example, GMH says that although the advantage of the NLC is the expediency and reduction of processing the nurse licensure application so that the nurse can begin working immediately, the downside is that there will also be a continual loss of our local nurses. Hence, it is imperative that we address and adjust the current salary structure for our nurses. And the chairperson of the Guam Nurse Licensing Board and the HPLO administrator also, they testify very similarly that this would move the administrative burden that is currently on our nursing board, our HPLO staff, to process licenses, to process emergency temporary work permits, they say, under the emergency declaration. But what I've asked them is, if it's a processing issue, it's something that Guam can control. Guam controls its nurse licensing laws. It controls its nurse licensing processes. This is one of the reasons other states won't give up that right. They want to be able to control nurse licensing in their jurisdictions to impose standards that they feel are relevant to their jurisdictions. And I don't believe that our standards are lower than the nurse compact standards. I, in fact, I think there is no standard that the nurse compact is instituting that Guam cannot institute if the nurses and the nurse licensing board want to do that. This would remove discretion of our nurse licensing board. It would remove application of any additional requirements that Guam would like to place. But one of my biggest concerns with the bill is just that, in addition to the other concerns stated by the professionals, which include that this bill must be addressed in conjunction with recruitment and retention measures, and we're not, we have not completed those. We are not anywhere near completing those. And this is a very serious issue for the Guam Memorial Hospital especially. In addition to that, in the government of Guam's efforts to address nurse shortages over the years, they have been very wise. They have set up programs like they have done for other professions where we are short on Guam. They have set up programs at the University of Guam. They have partnered with other states for education purposes so that we can grow our own local workforce, so that we can pay our own local workforce the salaries that we have been forced to pay off-island nurses during this pandemic and prior to this pandemic due to a nurse shortage. And when the governor lifted all the restrictions on nurse licensing during the pandemic, we did not see that mad rush of nurses to Guam. We will continue to face these issues, I think, despite whether we make the licensing easier or we, you know, we continue to impose our own standards on licensing. We need to fix the systems that all the, all the experts have pointed to us need to be fixed, which are the recruitment and retention programs. The University of Guam has also submitted testimony where they as well point out, you know, the potential benefits of the bill as well as the potential downsides. And if I may read this, Mr. Chair, it's dated February 3, 2021, addressed to Senator Joseph Augustine, testimony on Bill Number 13-36. Hafaday Senator St. Augustine, Senator Torres, Speaker Turlai, and other members of the legislature. My name is Dr. Margaret Hattori-Uchima, Dean of the University School of Health. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony. On behalf of the UOG Nursing Program, I must formally raise specific concerns related to the compact. The UOG Bachelor's Program has an existing health professions training program, which funds nursing students by providing for tuition, fees, books, and a stipend. It's been a critical program enabling students to obtain their BSN degree and have a service payback of two years for each year of financial support. This program has been successful, in particular, because of our high NCLEX pass rate. That is, all nursing training program recipients in recent years have become licensed RNs and hired by our local hospitals and healthcare agencies. For the last three years, the graduates have remained on island post-graduation, with only those who are military dependents leaving. In 2018, 93% were hired locally. In 2019, it was 94%, and our 2020 class has a 100% local hire rate. We are grateful to our partners, in particular, GMHA, GRMC, HSP, DPHSS, and Take Care, who hire our graduates in a timely manner and foster their career growth and growing local and regional capacity. In FY 2018, the scholarship program had 33 recipients, 26 in 2019, 29 in 2020. I anticipate similar or higher numbers for this coming fiscal year. The graduates have always been strongly encouraged to remain on Guam for their service payback and beyond. With the passage of this bill, I implore the nursing leaders, including the Guam Nurses Association and the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners, to be careful when publicizing the compact. Please limit glamorizing and any suggestions encouraging our local nurses to take advantage of the compact. The reality is that there is a nursing shortage. It is severe and not improving. We must, as leaders, take care in promoting the compact as a means to bring nurses to Guam, not as a way to enable our nurses to have increased mobility. The program continually discusses the nursing shortage and the need to assist our island community without students. The compact passage will make it easier for our graduates to move off island, and I implore our leaders to discourage use of the compact by our graduates. We are unable to limit the new graduates and disallow them from applying for the compact licensure. The scholarship is not a loan program. It is a service payback program to ease the nursing shortage and to assist in providing nurses for the island. I've continually voiced my concerns and have been informed that this cannot be included in the bill and that the Nurse Licenseur Compact administrators require all states and territories to utilize the same compact. On the positive side, I support measures that will bring more nurses to our island. But first and foremost, I believe we must, in parallel with this bill, do whatever we can to improve retention. This bill will make it easier for nursing faculty who live off island to be hired to teach without obtaining a Guam RN license. It will make the process easier for nurses to be brought to Guam for emergencies and disasters. I support the need to modernize the HPLO, and if this bill is the most effective and expedient way to do that, then that is an important consideration. We have not been able locally to make significant improvements in the HPLO in the past decades. The NLC promises to assist the GBNE and modernize our processes. Thank you for your time in allowing me to formally voice the concerns of the UOG BSN program. We support increasing the numbers of nurses on island, which is a complex problem that must be solved with multiple measures. This bill is not a cure-all, and I implore the legislature to take additional steps to implement measures that will improve retention of nurses. A complex matter requires that we work together on multiple fronts. This may be a step in the right direction but will not result in increasing retention without other measures. We must do what it takes to retain our highly skilled, dedicated nurses and to recognize that they have been ignored for too long. I realize that many feel that retention is a different issue, but it also deserves attention at this time. Thank you. Since ceremony, Margaret Hattori-Uchima, Ph.D., RN FAA, and Dean, School of Health, University of Guam. Mr. Chair, again, if this compact is clearly going to bring nurses to Guam, no one would oppose it. The problem was, when we had hearings before, even the nurse compact professionals, representatives from the states could not give us data. They would not give us any data as to what the impacts had been in other jurisdictions or had there been any studies as to what the impacts might be in Guam. At the time, even GFT brought up the issue as to the potential recruitment of Guam nurses who are getting paid less currently to states where they would earn more. And I think that is a significant issue. And of course, we're all trying to address that by addressing nurse salaries. However, that issue is not fully addressed. And so I would like to take the concerns of GMH and UOG and all the efforts that have been made by the government of Guam to recruit and to retain these nurses by improving the work conditions at GMH and raising their salaries, frankly, so that we can keep them there. And if it's, and not to throw that all away just for licensing convenience. I do believe we can bring licensing convenience to the HPLO office and that they must do that. And I want to also just point out a couple things that were said. You know, one person pointed out that in Hawaii, they were licensed easily. Hawaii is not a compact state. And that's why I truly believe that we can make our licensing process as easy as Hawaii's, and we've... And again, bringing the nurses to Guam during the pandemic is a completely different story as we had, the governor had removed all barriers to bringing nurses to Guam. And yet, we were still paying nurses huge amounts to practice on Guam. And I would just like to see that those amounts go to our local nurses. And I think we need to do that and then open up our borders. We don't do this with any other profession on Guam. We don't allow lawyers, I'll speak about lawyers because I know about lawyers. We don't allow open licensing on Guam. No jurisdiction does. That's because every jurisdiction wants to protect the practice of law in their jurisdictions. They want to protect their, the people on their jurisdictions. And that's what these licensing boards are supposed to do. And while Guam approved Medical Licensing Compact, it's not exactly the same as the Nurse Licensing Compact. And while they have licensed under the compact beginning, I want to say, recently, 2020, they finally began, after years of having it in statute, they finally began actually licensing medical professionals under the medical compact. Not all of those professionals actually practice on Guam. They're just licensed on Guam, and the medical board actually goes through the list and approves them. Or it's a different way that it's implemented, but I think we should also talk to them about their experience with that. Talk to the board, the chairperson of that board was Dr. Berg, and he had made some comments to me. Yeah, I would like to solicit his testimony in this matter as well, Mr. Chair.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, just one more thing is that, so for example, for the military nurses that want to practice during this would have been no barrier to them, none at all. And if there was a barrier, then it was a failure in our nursing board or some other process. But I don't, I don't think there was a barrier because my understanding is that they were able to process nurses for GMH within a day or two at the most. And that was testimony that we received at our roundtable. So I just think that if there are barriers in our licensing, we should address those. If there are gaps in what we feel are the safest, for example, law enforcement requirements, then we should demand those. But if the risks of this compact are correct, then we should not risk those, not until we fix the other issues that have been very clearly presented to us, that if you want to open up licensing on Guam for nurses, to any nurses from any state, that would be fine if we can fix salaries, particularly at GMH, so that we remain competitive, we can keep our highly skilled nurses. And again, Mr. Chair, it is, I think it's been testified on different occasions, different hearings, and so I think it's like a matter of well-known fact by now that Guam's nurses are highly skilled. They are very good nurses in high demand if they were to go anywhere else because of the skills that they earn here. And we've even heard the testimony today that that's why some of the other visiting nurses like it here because of the skill that they are surrounded by. And I just don't want to defeat the efforts that have been, you know, worked out through UOG and GMH to train local nurses. We've got an opportunity right now with workforce development money to... We've got an opportunity right now with workforce development money to really boost that up. And while we will always need specialized nurses to come to Guam to help us when we are lacking, I just don't believe that we necessarily need to achieve that through removing, you know, our control of licensing on Guam. And so, and again, I want to, I want to just, you know, I'm not against the bill, but I am, I do feel responsible, not just for, you know, whether we'd like to be, you know, if I'm a lawyer and they ask me, would I support open, you know, a license that would allow me to practice anywhere? I absolutely would say yes, of course I would. That is a benefit to me. But if I am the person, like I am right now, in charge of, you know, oversight of GMH, how are we going to assist GMH? How are we going to assist, you know, them in recruiting and keeping nurses on Guam and making sure that we can cover all those beds permanently? That we can make sure that we, our local people are brought into this nursing practice? Then I just don't want to give up on those efforts right now. I say we pursue those, we pursue the salary adjustments, we pursue the training, we remove every impediment that there is for training, recruitment, retention, and then, and then open up, because then, you know, as employers at GMH, you know, hopefully, we won't be losing our nurses at that time to go off island. And the records are very clear, Mr. Chair, as to how much nurses they lose every year, even without the compact, and that according to their testimony, they do believe it is a risk that they will lose nurses as well under this compact. And so I, I just, I'm just imploring my colleagues as well that we honor, you know, that if this is a complex issue that needs to be addressed, you know, on all levels, that's how we address it and that we don't defeat, you know, one side's efforts to try to grow local nurses and by removing their capacity to keep these nurses here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Pedro, before I allow you, I have the hand of Senator Tello. Senator Tello, you have any statements? And then you'll be followed by Senator Pedro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, I wanted to stay all the way through this hearing because, first of all, I want to listen to all the testimonies that has been provided. And first off, I want to thank the author of the bill, of Bill 1336. And I also want to thank all those people that testified regarding 1336, either they supported or not. And I guess I wanted to stay back and I wanted to listen to all the testimonies because I want to be, I want to be definite on, and definite on my position to either support the bill or not support the bill. And I guess I absorb all the pros and cons that was provided by those that provided the testimony, and I just want to thank everybody. And that is all that I wanted to do, is listen to the testimony so I can make that definite direction on just how am I going to vote for this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Senator Tello. Senator Tello, do you have any questions or statements you'd like to make, ma'am?
Sisus Maasi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this measure. As we all know, we heard this bill in the 35th Guam Legislature and the testimonies from others. And I greatly appreciate, Mr. Chair, all the work, the nurses, and their dedication into the medical field. And if anything, the Oversight Chair for Health definitely does her homework and researches a lot of the issues and the good points and the bad points to something. But if we look at the bigger picture here about what this bill would do, I think it's common sense tells you that why would a person from the state of California or the state of Hawaii or another state come to Guam where the salaries almost double lower than the amount that they would receive in the states? As well as to put on top of that, the cost of living to live on Guam? It's a no-brainer here. I understand the concerns of all the other nurses, but I think that we are addressing that with the concerns of the salaries, because that's basically what the bigger picture is here. It's the salaries. If we want to attract these nurses, then we need to pay them what they're getting in the states. In fact, Mr. Chair, you know finances, we need to pay them a little bit more because the cost of living on Guam is so much higher. The Good Oversight Chair was mentioning some of the states that were part of this or weren't part of this. During COVID, I'm pretty sure a lot of things stood still. They were paying nurses $5,000 a week to have them come to their states to work in some of these hospitals because of lack of nurses. I mean, we felt that crunch, Mr. Chair, when we brought the traveling nurses and we saw the bill, how much it cost after that. But it took money to bring them here. But, Mr. Chair, not only some of the states, but do you wonder why CNMI, American Samoa, Puerto Rico, these are territories that are similar to Guam, and why they're not on this compact? Because I think they realize the issue of trying to get nurses to come to their island, whereas the cost of living is high, but the salaries are about the same as Guam, maybe a little bit higher. But they realize the ramifications that would happen, and we are a U.S. territory as well. It was also brought up that we didn't get any data from nurses in the states. I have a sister who's in the medical field, who works at Tripler Hospital. So I decided to ask her, can you do a survey for me over at that hospital and ask some of these nurses, and this is how much it costs, how they feel? And it was just, you know, before coming in here, Mr. Chair, I just texted, you know, she can talk to some of the nurses there. One of the nurses that she did approach was someone from Guam, actually. You know, you would think, and in that text, she said that, that she sent to me was, the answer is from someone from Guam. And that person said, half of me says yes to be with family. Half of me is no, because how would I support myself? So I'm leaning toward no. She's still waiting, she's still talking to some other, because she is in quarantine in Honolulu right now, talking to some other nurses. And then when I told her how much the starting pay was, my sister said, be prepared for no, from these other nurses. We heard a testimony from Nurse Hattori, the professor over at the University of Guam. I mean, that's compelling. That's a testimony who she's trying to build up the nurses on Guam, because God knows we have a great shortage. We had one of our colleagues talk about, you know, nurses with her mom, and, I mean, it's really common sense to tell you that, are we going to have those same nurses to take care of our families here on Guam? Are we anticipating, you know, a whole plane load of nurses coming here because they want to get paid less, twice than, less than what they get in the states? I was talking to my father about this the other day, too, as I was preparing for the public hearing, and he just couldn't believe it. He says, oh, absolutely not, Tello. It's common sense. I know there's an issue with the salaries, and that's what, you know, I believe you and the Good Oversight Chair have been working on legislation to help with that. I think it's great, it's a start. And then maybe if we can raise the salaries of these nurses, which they justfully deserve, then maybe we can look at this legislation again at another time and implement it knowingly that in good conscience and for the sake of our families and our community of Guam, if they were here today to testify, could tell you that they would feel comfortable too in that case. But, Mr. Chair, you know, I also want to put for the record, because it seems sometimes people don't disclose, but the person testifying today was the author's daughter. So I just wanted to put that in for the record as well, since it wasn't mentioned, then I'll mention it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to testify before Senator Torres closes this bill? There being none, Senator Warren chose not to. Senator Torres, if you can please, closing statement, please, and then we would wrap up this bill.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and it has been a long morning, but, you know, certainly there was a lot of testimony provided, and the people who testified were not able to be here because they, many of them are frontline workers and others are residing off island. So I appreciate that you gave me the ability and my colleagues to read their testimony into the record. I want to just address a couple things, and this is really the challenge that the nursing leaders on Guam have had in presenting this to the legislature. The cloud of myths that they have tried to address but somehow seem to be consistently, you know, brought up, notwithstanding the answers that have been provided and the evidence. So with regard to the NLC states, the number of states that are presently members of the compact, I just want to update everyone that we keep alluding to 34 states that are presently members. The update is, and that is correct, 34 have adopted the nurse licensure compact in their states. There are, however, another eight states who have legislation in place right now to join the compact. And those states include Washington, Oregon, Alaska, Michigan, Ohio, Vermont, and Rhode Island. So, and Guam. So with that, if you were to consider the 34 that are in place and the eight that have pending legislation, you're now looking at over 40 states, 42 states across the U.S. and their territories. We also have received testimony in the past that our neighbors, the CNMI, are very interested in what Guam is doing. And so the idea that people have shut it out, I think, is not entirely accurate. And that perhaps the only one that I could see, that I could find who voiced why they are not joining is because many of their residents, many of the people that hold licenses there or practice there are not residents of their district, and that would be the District of Columbia, Washington, D.C. So for those that wonder why others are not on board, actually, the trend is growing to where eight have recently come on board with pending legislation at least, and that the great majority of the states and territories across the U.S. are buying into the NLC because of the known and proven benefits. I want to also reiterate that the issue of outmigration or hard and fast data about states that have experienced nurses leaving because of their joining the NLC and the lure of higher salaries elsewhere, or whatever lure might draw them out of practicing within their states, there is no data. And Jim Fuente from the NLC, the director, has explained to us that there is no data because there is no effect. If they could, if they could, anyone could measure that this has had that kind of an impact, then they can, you know, assess it. But the fact is, there is nothing to assess, there is no known or obvious migration, outmigration. So to say that we aren't providing that, well, that data doesn't exist because that effect, that negative effect, does not exist. And what the director did point out was, one reaction to that kind of an adverse effect would be for them to choose to get out. If it was hurting them, they would choose to get out, they would sever from the compact. And that statistic has also not happened. So I just wanted to bring that up again, that that was one issue. The other thing that I want to address with the salaries is, many of the testimony has addressed the salaries, but the idea is, we, I believe that, you know, the GMH position really has, is based on a fundamental misunderstanding of the immediate impact of this bill. It will take time for the board to implement a process to issue multi-state licenses to Guam nurses. And the idea that if a nurse wants to leave, a nurse will leave Guam, nurses leave, any person on Guam has the right and the freedom to reside wherever they want for whatever circumstances. And having a compact or not having a compact has little to do with that decision of that individual person. So I agree that we do need to do, address incentive and retention. And I've taken that first step, which is why I authored Public Law 35125. And I paid for it with my own office budget. I didn't mandate anybody to cough up the money. I believed in it enough to help the nurses, to help them in their multi-prong approach to retention and recruitment, that I gave up my money, $50,000, that I could have used to hire someone to help me, but I didn't. I chose to help them. So I put my money where my mouth is. Now, I want to address one thing, though, that really disturbs me as, from a civil point of view. Yes, we have investments in people. We have, we invest in people and we want to keep people with us, working with us. Nobody wants to lose anybody. A mother doesn't want to lose a child who sees better opportunities somewhere else. A person who trains an employee doesn't want to lose that employee when they're headhunted by someone else. But we're totally, they're totally free to do that. The idea that you would refrain from a policy because you fear that it might make it easier for somebody to seek better opportunities somewhere is patently wrong in our modern society. Let me explain without insulting anybody. In the days of the plantation, they made it so hard for anybody to move out of that You cannot bind someone and hold them hostage to a situation. We don't do that. Involuntary servitude does not exist in our society now. And in some ways, it's semblance of that if you're going to suggest that, I'm not going to make it easy for you to move on. Yes, you are going to make it easier for anybody to seek opportunities that will enrich their lives if they choose to go that route. Why people choose to do things, we can explain away. Why I choose to be a senator and deal with this aggravation? I don't know. Maybe because I love you enough that I do it, perhaps. So please, I don't want to, I don't want to disrespect the intelligence and the professional discretion of all those who have asked me to champion this for them. And Sisus Maasi for Vice Speaker Barnes and Senator Shelton for agreeing to help me in this effort. I have nothing to gain from this because I'm not in the profession. I have nothing to gain from this because I'm not in the profession. And I want to say because one of my colleagues very unfairly and unconsciously brings up my daughter every time she testifies. My daughter is a professional that holds a doctorate's degree in nurse practicing. She has dedicated her life to serving the island, notwithstanding the fact that she has six children and it was obviously very pregnant here, one of only three people that appeared here. I did not know she was coming this morning. But God bless you, people like Carla, for doing what you do, even though you stand the chance of being criticized for bias in coming here. There's no bias when we're dealing with professionals who do their jobs for the benefit of others and for no gain to themselves. But I just want to end with saying, all those who have testified in favor, we understand the benefits of the NLC. We understand that the perceived risks, but none of those have ever been scientifically measured because they're, the situation just is not obvious. And to anybody that, that worries about you want to keep people here, I think the idea, much of the sentiment is you've got a pool of people who could easily and would be willing to do it if this was in place, like the military nurses or others that might want to come to Guam to practice for whatever reason. And nothing is ever measured in money necessarily. It's never exclusively about money. If it were, we would all be holding the highest positions and living only in one city in the whole world that pays the most money. And that's not the way the world operates. But to all those in the front lines who couldn't be here today, we try to make your voices heard. And for all those who have been advocating since 2019, for someone to help them get this through because it's a, a benefit to Guam, including the investment in, in software and guidance that will help our nurses manage the licenses on Guam and the safety to our island and our patients. Sisus Maasi, Mr. Chair, for holding this oversight. And I implore everybody, if, if those who have testified have not done enough to persuade the senators to hear your voices, then, then please exercise your right to make your voices be heard and submit testimony. And the chairman will advise the length of time that testimony will be accepted by the committee. Sisus Maasi.
Thank you, Senator Torres. That was the last comments from the colleagues. The committee will continue to receive testimony. And please address every testimony to the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing and submit it via email to Senator Joe Essenauz at gmail.com or to my office located at Rand Care Building, second floor, suite 3761, Submarine Corps Drive, Timonin, Guam. Sisus Maasi for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. This public hearing on Bill 13-36 is now adjourned. It is now 11:55. And please have a nice day. The committee will come back at 2 o'clock for Bill 3-36. Thank you.